Good evening, everybody. We're going to commence the proceeding here this evening. We want to stick to a time schedule. So, the first order of business is to welcome everybody to the public hearing on the proposed restructure of Southbridge Middle High School. Excuse me, please. Thank you. We are going to begin this hearing, and I want to welcome everybody to the public hearing on the proposed restructure of Southbridge Middle High School. Today is Tuesday, May 26th. It's 7:00, and we're going to begin. So, the first order of business is pledge of allegiance. Please join the school committee in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I will call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And first order of business is I'd like the school committee to introduce themselves. So, I'll begin down here.
I'm Jill Condon.
Ray Page.
Crystal Levo.
Lauren McLaughlin.
Cheryl Stan.
Karen Donovan.
Ryan Bieber.
Aaron Alden.
Thank you. Note that all school committee members are present on the dais for the hearing, as well as the superintendent and the business manager. Thank you. So, now I'm going to discuss some procedures for a hearing that we're going to follow tonight. So, I am school committee chair, Lauren McLaughlin. I will be presiding over the hearing today. The purpose of the hearing is to invite testimony from members of the public regarding the proposal to restructure Southbridge Middle High School. The restructure would impact both Southbridge Middle High School and the central office. The committee will hear testimony from persons present who wish to speak for, against, or neither for or against the proposal. With leave of the chair, the committee members may ask questions of any person testifying today, but may not engage in debate. Whether or not you testify, you may submit written testimony to the committee. Please be mindful that testimony is public and is available to all once it is presented. Persons testifying at the public hearing today are also advised the hearing is being recorded by Southbridge Cable Access Television. Anyone else who is recording the hearing should notify the chair. I have allotted an hour and a half for this hearing, and tonight's hearing will be conducted in accordance with school committee policies BEDH and BEE. Guidelines for the hearing will be as follows. Each speaker must provide his or her name and address. All remarks should be addressed to the chair. Each speaker is limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chairperson may terminate that individual's privilege of address. Speakers may offer objective criticisms of school operations and programs that concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor against any member of the school community. Those in attendance are asked to refrain from disrupting the meeting by making noise of any kind, such as clapping, cheering, booing, hissing, anything like that. Everyone is asked to abide by and respect these guidelines so the public hearing process can proceed smoothly, and all who wish to speak will have the opportunity to do so. So, with that being said, I'm just going to ask the superintendent to provide some background, some remarks relative to the proposed restructure. Miss Stanton, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for everyone coming out this evening to voice your thoughts on the proposed restructure. I do want to say that this has been a process that has not been a knee-jerk reaction to any one singular event. It has been an ongoing discussion that we have considered making because of several data sources that we have analyzed. Those include the DESI AIP quarterly reports of quarters 1, 2, and 3, which indicate that there are some concerns regarding factors such as attendance, course failures. We've also looked at and actually initiated the search, I'm sorry, the review report from Schoolworks. They came in and did an analysis. They interviewed students. They interviewed staff. They interviewed administration, and they provided their insights into the building. So, we have quarterly reports. We have the Schoolworks report. The assistant superintendent and I have had conversations with staff as a result of those reports and the outcomes of those reports. And we also have input from the staff evaluation and the survey that was given, and that was given throughout the district in all of the buildings. So, again, I want to say that this is not a solution that we have come to lightly. We have looked at several different points of data to get to this point, and I am very much eager to hear your thoughts regarding the restructure, and we can, I suppose, commence.
Thank you. So, anybody who would like to speak? Is Mr. Latoy going to facilitate the microphone, or is the microphone going to be moved for the public?
Mr. Montigny, I believe the microphone is stationary.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the microphone is stationary, so anybody who would like to speak, please feel free to make your way to the podium.
Good evening. Monique Manna, 20 Maple Street, Southbridge resident and town councillor. I have two questions through you, Madam Chair. I suppose my first question would be, with this restructuring, I understand the need to have two principals at the middle high school. What I don't understand is why you are making employees who are already employed reapply for their jobs. Why not advertise for a new principal for the middle high school or the high school? And I suppose my second question would be in regards to the survey. Was this an independent survey done by an outside company, or was it just within the school system? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to take that? Do you want me to take that? You want me to? Sure. Okay. Thank you, Councillor Manna. Regarding your first question, we're really here to take public input rather than to get in a back-and-forth with questions, but your questions, I will answer those. The first is that legally, when positions need to be eliminated so that others can be created, and that's just a legal issue that's part of a restructure process. It happened with the last restructure of the school, or the first structure of the school when it was set up, and similar now. And that survey, I can't speak to, I didn't give the survey, so.
The survey that we used, that was used throughout the district, was the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education survey. That was not edited in any way, so that was given in all of the buildings throughout the district.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the school committee? Can you please identify yourself? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie DiMartino. I reside at 92 Harrington Street. I just wanted to tell the school committee, I'm in full support of your proposal. I think it's way past due, and there are two school systems up there with two different cultures, grade 6 through 12. They need two principals and two assistant principals. I'm a mother of a junior, and I chose school choice for my daughter because of the school system. She started with the class of 2011 as a freshman. She was one of the first, the first class up there at the new middle high school. I pulled her out. I got school choice for her because of all the problems that the school was going through. I support you guys in what you're doing. I respect the work that you're doing. I think you're on the right path. I want to bring my daughter back for senior year to Southbridge High. She wants to come back, and I think this is a great move, and I support you 100 percent. Thank you.
Mark Peters, 28 Clements Hill. I have three children in the school system for many years now, and I think that the school system and the teachers and administration is doing a fine job, doing a great job. And I see that in their experience and their education and how they're doing so well, thriving in this system. I attended the May 12th school committee meeting, first one, in a while, and there was discussion about proceeding with a superintendent search, and there was concern about stability and wanting to make sure we do the process properly and maintain stability. And I agree absolutely. The kids need to have stability. Two agenda items later, you started talking about something with the word "restructure" in it, and to me, those two don't go together. I don't know how you can possibly restructure without some instability. Furthermore, it sounds like the leadership person, the superintendent, would be the person that would help smooth a transition, and of course, that's the position we have yet to seek and fill on a, you know, master plan here. So, after the meeting, I happened to attend three or four activities that the kids were doing through school, a band concert, an awards ceremony, car wash, a few things. And I ran into several teachers, several administrators, and I asked them, "What do you think of the plan?" And I was surprised at the response. I got everything from "no comment, I don't feel safe commenting," to "somebody stopped by my office for 10 minutes, talked to me." I later figured out that that was related to a plan. I understand that it's going to affect me. I have no idea how. I don't know if it'll be good or bad. What I did not hear was, "I know what the plan is. I think there's great things in the plan. We have some ideas that we've shared, and let's get started." So, whatever the plan is, I'm very concerned that we don't have enough input from the existing teachers and administrators, and they're all probably wondering, "Oh, my goodness, what's going to happen to me?" We need that stability. We need those teachers and staff to be there in the fall. The kids comment all the time how it's been nicer this year, there's been fewer teachers that have left, there's been fewer, there's been less turnover, and they're really, I'm seeing a change, and they're seeing a change. So, whatever the plan is, however it's rolled out, I implore you to sit down and talk to all the current teachers and staff and get their feedback and input on this plan, and make sure you have their buy-in, because they know, they're trained in this. They're doing a great job. I just want to make sure it's factored in. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Linda Cross. I live at 38 Holland Road in Wales, Massachusetts. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a member of the school council, and I have a daughter who's a freshman at SMHS. My husband and I live in Wales, but chose to enroll our daughter here this year because we were looking for a school with more diversity. For some reason, for the same reason, we had chosen to school choice another daughter who was a member of the last graduation class in the old high school. She's now a senior at Bay State College of Boston, majoring in hospital administration. We had found that although we had been advised not to school choice her to Southbridge High School, because it would be, they would be unable to give our daughter the quality of education that she needed to succeed. The education and opportunities she received here had indeed given her a good foundation to do well in college and pursue her dreams. We are a multi-race family, having adopted nine children from Haiti, Russia, and America. We have found that each child needs different approaches, but one thing they all need is consistency. They also need to be valued for who they are, and they need to be believed in. We have found that SMHS has provided this for our daughter this year, which was directly a result of the way the administration has handled a variety of situations. The daughter who attends here has some difficult, some significant learning differences, which affects not only her academics, but processing of social situations. Because of the great need for a good special education program, she needed a principal, vice principals, ISS, teacher, and councillor to help her to succeed. We were warned again not to change schools, as many people believe that SMHS didn't have the resources to adequately help our daughter as compared to the Tantascwa district. I hope, I'm hoping I'm getting into three minutes. I really prepared this.
Don't, don't. You're doing fine.
It does make sense in the end. I am here to say that the staff at SMHS, and especially Mrs. Earls, Mr. Kakes, Mr. Austin, and Mr. Keller have been key to my daughter's success this year. When my daughter entered the school, I was very concerned when she was in an exclusion math class of 25, 9th to 12th grade students. The teacher did not have the qualifications or the experience to teach the class. Issues arose very quickly, and after trying to work with the teacher, my husband and I felt we should approach the principal. Mrs. Earls had already been very aware of the situation and had already been working toward changing the situation. The class was split, so the older students would have another class. Although that helped immensely, I was still concerned about the quality of education my daughter was receiving. I spoke to a retired math teacher about my concerns, and although he agreed that my daughter needed a more qualified teacher and smaller class, he said it would never happen at SMHS, because the school was known for their lack of money to help those students. I am thankful to say that this assessment was wrong. A qualified teacher who understands the special needs students was hired, and our daughter has excelled in math this year to the point that she will be able to confidently enter a regular classroom in the fall. Because of my daughter's difficulties with processing social situations, there were many situations at the beginning of the year that needed to be handled by Mr. Kakes and Mr. Austin. They handled each situation with skill and desire to find the best way to help our daughter to learn and grow while dealing fairly with all who are involved in the situations. Our daughter has learned how to handle difficult situations in a more healthy way this year, and we know that it's a direct result of the excellence of the administration at SMHS. Our daughter has also been an active member of the sports program here through cheerleading, basketball, and softball. Some significant issues arose during the cheerleading season, but Ms. Capera, along with Mrs. Earls, handled a very difficult situation with professionalism while caring for the member of the cheer team. Although a change of coaches in the middle of the season was difficult, it was necessary, and we found that the new coach was excellent and helped the team finish strong. Throughout the other seasons, we have found that Ms. Capera has been right on top of any issues that have arisen, working tirelessly to help the coaches and students to have all they needed to do their best. Having been part of the Southbridge Athletic Program for years, I believe that she, given more time, would help to change the success of the sports program at the school. She has the knowledge, training, and vested interest in the students at SMHS. So, you're going to take out that athletic. As I have stated before, I have found in working with my children, as well as as a music teacher, that what makes the most difference in their lives is consistency and a belief in that each individual has potential. SMHS has been through many administrative changes since the opening of the new school. I believe that some of the significant issues found in the survey are a direct result of the fact that there has been a lack of consistency in the administration. Having worked with Mrs. Earls on the school council and observing her interactions with the students at sports events, I can confidently say that she believes in each individual. She believes that each individual has potential, and she works to create a learning environment that is conducive to the success of each student. She knows her teachers and challenges them to raise the bar. It's my belief that changing the structure at SMHS is at this time, at this time would be detrimental to what has begun to take place this year. Mrs. Earls, Mr. Kakes, Mr. Austin, and Ms. Capera work together well to promote high expectations combined with concern for the individual. I would like to suggest that you give at least two more years to work with the SMH, that they are given at least two more years to work with the SMH community before you make such drastic changes in the structure of the school.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I do want to say that for those who are not familiar with the role of the school committee, we do not have, personnel is not our call. What is our call would be a structure and a system, but not directly personnel. But I do appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Kenny Allard, and I live at 41 Warren Street, Southbridge, Mass. I am currently a sophomore at Southbridge Middle High School, and I'm here this evening to voice my opinion and concern regarding the proposed restructure of the middle high school. With the utmost respect for all people elected officials and committee members, I truly believe that the proposed changes in possible turnover of administrations would have a detrimental effect on our current plan of improvement at all levels of the middle high school. The current administration at the middle high school has made a vast stride in the education, the atmosphere, and discipline, and the morale for the students and faculty. The possibility of dismantling our current administrative teams will once again place students into a situation of change. Since my eighth grade year at the newly-built middle high school, I personally have seen six principals at the helm. I ask you to please consider retaining the current administrative team rather than restructuring them from top-down. Some changes in life are necessary, but I truly believe that the people who currently hold positions of administrators are dedicated professionals capable of the outcomes we all desire. The principal, vice principals, and support staff believe in the success, sorry, believe in the success of all students, and to disrupt this progress now would be a mistake. The current administrators at SMHS possess the qualifications, the skills, the desire, the insight, the dedication, and the perseverance needed to propel our school forward, and isn't that what we all are striving for? As a young adult, I have been taught to respect, support, and believe the ideals of education. I have taken an active role in activities, sports, leadership roles, in volunteering my time to help the school and my class of 2017. I believe in pioneer pride, and I believe in our administrators. Though I am only one voice, I know that it takes one person to invoke a message. We cannot move mountains without strong men and women who possess the knowledge, the skills, and the dream of moving those mountains. The men and women capable of that are already in place at SMHS. I therefore ask you to believe in them, believe in the process, and let them continue to move us forward. They all give us the tools necessary, and though I am but one voice this evening, I am ready, I'm already willing and able to forge ahead with them in order to move that mountain. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Hi. My name is Carrie Walker. I'm 155 Dennison Hill Road. My daughter is a sophomore at Southbridge Middle High School. I don't have my glasses, so please bear with me. I am here hoping for some clarification regarding the restructuring of our school. I don't understand why it's acceptable to wait an entire year to begin a search for a superintendent and yet rush into a restructure. Is there ample time to post for the jobs for all the administrators, review resumes, interview candidates, choose suitable people to fill these positions, and allow any new hires to get to know their jobs and responsibilities before the start of the school year? Why is it necessary for the current administration to reapply for their jobs? Since my kids went to Wells Middle School, I have seen a revolving door with administrators coming and going. There has been no stability for students, faculty, or staff, and now that we have a hard-working, dedicated principal, you want to once again create upheaval within our school. What I've seen from Mrs. Earls, she has made great strides in the time that she has been with us. She has reinstated the school council, which has not been active for years, created a student advisory board, and attends as many events as physically possible. I have not seen one person who works in central office or sits on the school committee other than parents at any of our sporting events, chorus, or band concerts, swag night, or school plays. I've seen her at all of them, supporting our students. She is working hard to improve our school's problems, problems that we hear long before she ever walked in that door. She is liked and respected by parents, faculty, and staff. More importantly, she is admired and respected by the students themselves. Yes, there are many issues that plague our school. Discipline is a major problem. However, this is a problem from kindergarten through 12th grade. This is a district-wide problem and needs to go be addressed at all levels. It is also becoming increasingly harder to deal with students who have behavior issues due to restrictions by our district and our state education system. If a child is consistently causing problems, being disrespectful, and getting into trouble, we can no longer expel that child. Suspensions are frowned upon. Each child needs the same amount of learning time. So, how does an administrator deal with this if their hands are tied? What became of the alternative school project that was proposed for our district? If we have a pattern of unacceptable behavior from a student, we should have a place to send that student that is specifically designed for behavior problems. Don't send them back to the class to distract, to continue to distract our district, I'm sorry, and distract from the students who want to be there and learn. We, as a district and as a community, need to stand behind the administrators when enough is enough. Three strikes and you're out, no friends, no fun and games, only discipline and learning. We need to stop enabling the behavior and blaming the adults who try to deal with this every day. This leads to the culture of our school. If a parent has no problem with a child acting out, what recourse does the school have? If a teacher leaves numerous messages for a parent, sends notes home, emails, and gets no reply, what are they to do? I have logged hundreds of hours volunteering throughout the years. Whether it's band, drama, school plays, field trips, concession stands, do you know what I see? The same parents always helping. No matter the cause or the event, it's always the same handful of parents there to lend a hand. Parents don't want to get involved, so the rest of us do the best we can with what we have, and so does this administration. If a parent doesn't care about the child's behavior, then why should the student? In this world of instant gratification, children are no longer taught consequences. We allow them credit recovery rather than trying to stop the behavior and find a solution to the problem. It seems to me that the rush to restructure is an excuse to relieve certain people of their positions, that the timing with the elections almost upon us is too coincidental. For the 13 years I've had children in this district, I have seen too many grown-ups throwing sand at each other in the sandbox. Too many times, politics have been the priority over our children's needs. It's time to stop and think about how this restructure will affect our kids. To rush in with not enough time for any new hires to learn the job, the school, the kids, would be detrimental to our students. To remove, move people who are working hard for and with our kids would also be detrimental. How many more parents will opt for school choice? How many good teachers will be looking elsewhere for jobs? We have so many people here who give 150% every day, who go above and beyond from custodial staff to faculty, staff, and administration. Why not show them support? Stop throwing politics into the mix. Some of you may be wondering why I'm wearing a long-sleeved shirt on an 80-degree day, because the back says "Proud Pioneer Parent." I wear this because I support my daughter and all of the other students who strive hard to succeed in every endeavor. I support the dedicated teachers who in no way have gotten enough support, and I support this administration. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the school committee, please? Anybody else? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Jason Jarvis. I live at 4 Pine Dale Street. I ask the audience forgive me, I'm not a very good public speaker. I get nervous. My ears turn red or I drool, just please ignore it. I have two kids inside the Southbridge school system at this time, and I have to say that they've had some wonderful experiences along their journey. They're both inside the elementary school right now. Two of their superteachers, I believe I've seen tonight here, Mrs. Scrippsack, and Mrs. Champney, I believe is in the audience as well somewhere. And I just want to say that I'm very happy with the education my children have received up to this point. I've taken some great care tonight in order to make sure I don't present myself as a mudslinger. I have no agenda towards any individual. I have friendships and relationships on both sides of this issue. My focus tonight is how I feel about this system and this process. I am attempting here to do what I think is right and not hurt anyone along the way. My comments are not personal. I will focus on how I feel. Madam Chair, I'm asking you to stop the rush and to stop this restructuring at this point in time. This whole process at this point does not look good from the road. What I mean by that is several years ago, I attended a sexual harassment training, and in the middle of this, in the course of the sexual harassment training, people are arguing, well, what's right and what's wrong, what looks bad, what doesn't look bad. And the best advice I took from there was when the trainer said to us, "Look at it from the outside. How does it look from the road? If anybody can look at it and say, hmm, something's wrong, then it probably is, and you should act accordingly." During this school restructuring plan, I will again say, this does not look good from the road. And that's not because I believe the idea of restructuring is wrong, not at all. The two-principle model may in fact be the best model. It is this process of implementation that has been done, which is what I have a concern with. It makes my gut tighten. It makes my nerves twitch. The town manager the other night, in a very professional, intelligent manner, addressed the budget, addressed the budget meeting, and he said, "There's a gorilla in the room." And the only reasons restructure And the only reason to restructure in this way is pretty much to fire someone. Extending this logic, the only reason to fire one in this manner is because there's no legitimate cause, otherwise you'd, you'd do it inside the other fashion. And it looks like a backdoor firing. And firing for people with no legitimate cause, that to me is misbehavior. I read a real lot, and one of the, one of the people that, a theorist that I, that I align myself with and, and recognize his ideas and value his ideas, is somebody by the name of Drucker. And he says that there's, there's three main motivators for misbehavior. And he identifies those motivators as attention, power, and revenge. And while I am not a mind reader, and I don't have sufficient information to ascribe any of these motivations to any individual members of this issue, Drucker also taught me something else, though. He taught me that a, a good guess can be made through self-assessment. How I feel when I'm confronted with the behaviors of others can somewhat indicate to me what their motivation is. For attention-seeking, uh, when people are seeking attention, it always leaves you feeling tired and frustrated. And Madam Chair, I have definitely felt tired and frustrated over the last couple of years addressing these issues. When, when having a power play, when a power is the, the main issue going on, it leaves one feeling as if they're on guard. When I'm writing this speech tonight, I started off with that big caveat, that big intro in order to say, well, careful, I don't want to be interpreted wrong way, because I feel right now that I'm on guard and I'm fearful of, of a response, which suggests to me that power's an issue here as well. But it's revenge that's the scariest behavior of all, and that is my ultimate greatest concern for what is going on here. See, revenge always leaves the recipients feeling hurt, and I don't like it when people are hurt. In addition to revenge just causing harm, though, uh, I have to also mention something that the, that was alluded to inside the budget meeting, is that revenge causes potential financial impacts. As the town manager discussed, this type of restructuring plan, it has the, the legitimate potential to generate legal expenditures, unemployment expenses, which constitute, to me, a waste of our town's limited resources, and that's limited financial resources and personnel resources that are going to be fired inside this process. So, for those of you who haven't tracked all this, I, I, I'd like to tell you how I think we got here. I think we got to, I've watched the town and I've watched friendships disintegrate over these issues. I've watched the town get split in two. My personal belief is that what led up to this centralizes on the interim appointments of the last super and then an MCAS investigation. I believe that the secrecy of the outcomes from that event has prevented the town from healing and resulted in a blame-the-victims-type situation, which is an underlying agenda. I believe that the reluctance of the school committee to conduct a search for a permanent super further fuels this discontent and hinders actually the power of the super even to effectively do her job, because any action she's done, whether justified or not, are, are diminished in their capacity due to dissent that it's, it's generated. And the dissent that is generated is widespread, cultural in, in, in us. You have the school committee, I'm sorry, you have the town council issuing a no-confidence vote against the school committee. That's unheard of, that, that, that just doesn't happen. You have the town manager making statements to the same effect. And you have various town leaders who are publicized online, who, who can be found writing letters to the school committee, to the papers, to anybody, list, asking their, for their voices to be heard, because to them, just like me, this doesn't look good from the road, and it's not going to get us to where we want to go. So, my recommendation is, well, let me say this. I don't think you should ever complain or raise issue with something unless you're also willing in order to make a recommendation for solutions and to work to that end. So here's what I would like. First, I'm asking, and, and I know people are going to debate this one, but I want it to be looked into a little bit further for me, please. I'm asking for you to release as much information as possible to all matters which led to this situation, to the questions for the surveys, for the survey reports, the state stuff, and also for specifically information related to the MCAS investigation. As the party that was investigated waived her right to be heard in executive session, I think there may be some allowances that should be, we should be able to get some information from that, and I think the Attorney General should be consulted specifically to what information can be provided for public record. Only by having some of that information will the town be able to look at that, look at what got us here, and maybe heal from some of the injuries that have been caused over the years. Second, I want the school committee to immediately prioritize the search for a long-term superintendent. I want them also to include Ms. Stanton as a strong and viable candidate, to be vetted by a legitimate public process. By doing so, that would empower her or whoever gets selected for that position to actually perform all the duties without this craziness, without the town council saying no, without the town manager saying no, by having the community stand up and say, "Yeah, go for it." Thirdly, I want you to immediately stop the rush to this restructuring. While the restructuring in the middle high school may be justified, this process, as it's been implemented up to this point right now, it's not going to get you to where you want it to go. It's already created more of a negative culture. School committee, please stop the rush.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Kathy Nicola, 318 Worcester Street, Southbridge. Good evening. Good evening. Venerable people up there. Um, I'm no longer a member of the, uh, town council, I've been off the council for a while. Um, I was very involved in the building of the new middle high school that you are now discussing, and I just have a couple of, uh, comments I'd like to make. Number one, I have to kind of keep a straight face when you talk about restructuring, because the school has been restructured ever since it was built. Every time I turn around, you've got a new principal, or a new this person, or a new that person. And I can only imagine how confusing and difficult it has to be for students coming into a new facility repeatedly, seeing new faces, new, 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 new all the time. And I am a firm believer that children thrive in something that they're comfortable in, not in unfamiliarity every time you turn around. Half, at least half of the people that have been dismissed up on the hill were dismissed for no apparent reason whatsoever. You lost some very good people. And I'm not pointing a finger at you because you didn't have anything to do with it. I am, however, not happy with the fact that for a very long time, your interim superintendent had six guns and was popping people off right and left to his own, you know, for his own, for his own whatever, and was allowed to get away with it by you. Your, your, you were his boss, and you allowed it. That was wrong. He should have been gone a long time ago. Credentials be damned. He did nothing good for this district. I know it, they know it, and you know it. The fact that so many people are sitting out here tonight is really nice, that should be addressed a heck of a lot more by you than it is. Parental super, parental involvement should be the most important thing that you folks find a way to get to. That is the problem in this town. My kids went to Southbridge High, this building. This building that had leaks in every room, no door hand, no doorknobs on the doors. Teachers who really, really, really were tired of being teachers, and it showed. And yet, my kids thrived. They both went to college, got degrees, and they both lived very good, full lives. I didn't school-chose them, they went to Southbridge High School, because I'm their mother, and I helped them, which is what every kid's parents are supposed to do. It shouldn't all be on the school and on the teachers and on you. And you're doing what you can because we apparently have an awful lot of parents in this town who just don't care, and they don't understand the concept of education. They think it's the teacher's responsibility to bring the kids up. That's very apparent. It's a tired line, but it's still true. What I would like to see you focus on a little more, first of all, I don't think change right now is the greatest idea. Kids need to have a vacation from change. There's been too much of that. And if there's a problem with what you have in place right now, work on that. It doesn't mean that you need new personnel. When we first built that thing up on the hill, we, we had at that time, and it's in this report, said there should be one principal for each school, separate entrances for the kids, the whole nine yards. But that wasn't listened to. We handed over the keys, "Good luck, go with God," and they did what they pleased. So that was already in place, but it never, it never came to fruition. And I'm not here to say, "I told you so," but, you know. Seriously, the one thing that I really think that you should find somebody to do, and I mean full-time, not, you know, this is another responsibility of yours, you need a good PR person. You really do. That is a huge, huge thing. When you have people blogging that kids are bringing C4 into the school, which is a load of crap, but parents are out there hearing and seeing that online, all kinds of rumors and innuendo that are masked behind, you know, freedom of speech, you need to, you need to, you know, polish the image. I've heard a couple of parents talk glowingly about what goes on up there. Most of us wouldn't be aware of that if it wasn't for those parents. You need to do something about that. It's a problem. The, the rumors become facts, and half the people who have half a brain in this town believe it without looking into it further. So I recommend that that's something you can do. You can work on that, you can work on your image. I would leave the restructuring alone right now and let the kids try to thrive with what's there. Work on the discipline. I see a section in here about civic responsibility. How about, "Your mommy and daddy are going to pay for that damage." There you go. Try it. And, you know, I've got nothing else to say. I don't have children in the school system anymore. Good luck to all of you, good luck to all of you, but I did the best I could when I could, and you have no idea how difficult it is for somebody like me who spent years working on that school project, and as soon as the school got in there, it went right down the hill. I'm very disappointed, extremely sorry in many ways that I got involved in that project. I guess I really was very naive. I put more trust where I shouldn't have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Good evening.
Wow. Excuse my voice, I have a paralyzed vocal cord that's being repaired by Mass Ionia Scott Lazzo, 36 Ellis Road, Southbridge, former town counselor, chairman, former school committee chairman, and former chairman of the building committee. The previous speaker covered a lot of stuff about the building. I served 10 years on the building committee. We studied this organization, and I'm very, very ecstatic, happy to see that we see the light now after we opened that building and we turned it into a disaster with the reconfiguration of a single administrator. We studied it for 10 years, not just me, a lot of people. And think about this, we had a unified vote of council, building committee, and school committee. We had a unity in the community second to none. Right now, we don't have that. Not that it can't come back, not that we can't rebuild ourselves as a community with our pride and our tradition. We can do this. But let history be the teacher that after 10 years of studying this school and going to look at 35 other buildings and traveling to Boston every day with Dale Hanley, finding out what the best deal was for the town of Southbridge, working hand-in-hand with the counselors, as the chairman changed, we changed, we still work together no matter who the chairman was for the cause. What happened, 30 days before we opened the building that we studied for 10 years, the management was abruptly changed to a single administrator. I begged them not to do that, it's going to be a disaster. One, one member asked me, "How do you know that's going to happen?" I've seen it through my experience in 29 years of service in this community, that it's going to go backwards, and we did. A lot of great things are happening at the school, I'm not going to chop Southbridge High School, Middle School, I'm truly a pioneer. I graduated from this high school, and I was proud to work on the completion of the new vision, the optimism, the happiness that the community had when we were moving forward with this new building. I thought it was paramount to put Southbridge back on the map. It still can do that, we still can do that, and I keep saying "we." I might disagree with you on a lot of different stuff. This model is the original model. If you walk into the middle high school, we have a tower in administration on the right, a tower administration on the left, and it was supposed to be one building, two separate operations, to save the taxpayers money. We built the school without a tax hike, we were supposed to liquidate a couple old buildings to pay our percentage. The state footed most of the bill. It was a grand slam, and we tripped. That doesn't mean that it's over. You're not judged on how you went down, you're, you're judged on how you get up. So when we look at this, the one flaw I see in this plan is doing it as quickly as you're doing it. I remember we needed principals when we had an acting superintendent, Jean Fair, and Jean Fair and I sat down with, uh, Jack Jovian of the school committee and said, "Let's not make any big moves till you get the captain on the team, the coach, the head on the horse, which is the superintendent." So we did not make any earth-shaking moves. We didn't want to hand off to another school committee our decision. We ended up waiting for Dale Hanley. Dale Hanley got on board, and then all of a sudden, the ship started to turn. The new school building, which they told me, "We could never build a new school in Southbridge, never mind a middle high school," but never did we not believe in our kids, our community, and our will to accomplish the mission, and we did. So now I sit here, and I have to recommend, especially to the vice chairman and chairman, because you were one of my former colleagues, I served with you, now is the time to start your superintendent search, not to reorganize the high school. And when there's an argument in a discussion on how long does it take to do a search, I was chairman of the Florence Chandler search, it was 90 days. We did 90 days for Dale Hanley, and then we had the disaster of Ely. I probably didn't do everything perfect in my 29 years of service, but my heart was always in the right place, and I think that this is where you have to stop and think about this community. It's not often you have this many people sitting in front of you saying, "Do this, please." They're asking for transparency, they're asking for, you know, some sort of stability, and I'm, I'm with them, I'm with you, I'm not against you. How do we get there? Don't be afraid to listen to the small people in this town. I know you sit in a powerful chair, but here's where we always forget when we're up there, how these people are the ones that foot the bill with the tax rate, they go to the polls, they vote, and they just want a good school, and I think you want a good school also. Put the head on the horse first, then reorganize. I think that the superintendent has to build he or she's, um, uh, pyramid of, of, uh, management, she has to build her team. We can't build her team and then get a superintendent, so by the way, this is what we have. Think about how many athletic directors, principals, and superintendents we've went through. Southbridge has set a record, we've set a record, not a good record, because that revolving door just keeps happening. We never had that revolving door because we had belief that we could professionally develop, mentor, or help somebody get up to speed in what they were doing as a job. Nobody was a total incompetent, because you wouldn't hire them in the first place. The only thing I have to say is, I wish you the best of luck in your decision, it's a tough one, but I think it's a simple one. Now's not the time to shake up the school. I would like to go on graduation and see one principal do two years in a row. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Jacob Dorian residing at 895 Golfwood Road. So I've been in Southbridge all my life, and I'm the only one of my siblings who stayed in Southbridge because I gave Southbridge the chance that it deserved. in Southbridge, because I gave Southbridge the chance that it deserved. And I realized I made the right choice. With the people in office at Southbridge Middle High School right now, they are changing everything for the better, and trying to get rid of them to restructure the school isn't a great idea. Ms. Earls is restructuring the school, not all at once, but bit by bit, to work the kids into it, so that way, they're not being hit with a bunch of change at once, like they have been ever since the school opened.
John McHugh, 49 Main Street, former teacher. Okay, so that's out of the way. My remarks are about process. Like the gentleman said, what it looks like from the road. Okay? I have no condemnations. This is what it looks like. Okay? Where are the decision-making matrices that define the problems that this restructuring plan is supposed to solve? What are the exact quantifiable problems with the way ISS program is being run? What were other options that were examined? What are the blessings and the curses, positives and negatives, with leaving the status quo or going to another option? What are the quantifiable problems with the single-principal model that we now have? Again, what are the blessings and curses, positives and negatives? What's the negatives and positives of keeping the things the way they are? And then, I watched the school committee meetings, and Dr. Page brought up the idea of using the junior high school plan. Moving the 6th grade back to elementary school because of the age differences and things like that. Was that ever discussed? What were the positives and the negatives? And if you would go to a junior high school model, would you need to have two principals or only would one principal do using a junior high school model? Where's the decision-making... I don't speak in public that much anymore. Where is the decision-making matrix on not conducting a superintendent search, starting when then-acting interim superintendent Buzz Nibberhoff was let go or quit? Then again, when Gardner was asked to leave? The following are statements. "Southbridge schools deserve and need a superintendent who is totally focused on the schools and the students. This requires a superintendent who is qualified and experienced, and not one that is working on a PhD. It is the nature of attaining a PhD that the candidate must do original research. In common terms, they must experiment on our students. In essence, our students become stepping stones to the PhD candidate's future. It is the appearance that Southbridge Public Schools are being run by caprice, whim, and vindictiveness. We, the citizens and taxpayers of Southbridge, deserve to know the facts behind the decisions that are being made. I have no way of knowing whether Superintendent Stanton is the best person for the job or not, but I do know that she is the product of the Buzz Gardner vetting system, and that's enough to know that maybe she carries some of the stain of failed administration." Now, that doesn't mean, you know, do a superintendent search, she's a candidate, and vet her that way. And finally, I was on the DESC website tonight, and there are 30 positions in the central office. They're listed, 30 of them. I counted them. Is there any plan in this restructuring to reduce the size of the central office? Thank you.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Janira. I live in 43 Coombs Street in Southbridge. The reason why I'm here is because I have... I am a mother of a 5th grader who is going to attend the middle school next year, and I am very worried because of the stories I have heard about the middle school. So I support the restructuring of the school to have two principals, so parents and teachers, and the children of the middle school, high... middle and high school will each have a leader.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jack Jovan, 80 Highland Street, Southbridge, Mass. First off, I'd like to thank you as being school committee members, because I know how hard it is to be a school committee member. Serving 10 years on the school committee through a lot of difficult times. I look at today where we're at as a school system and think back to when I initially came on the school committee, being appointed some 15 years ago. And we had a lot of issues with the schools. We had a middle school that there were constant fights. My colleague, Ms. Prince Bay, was on the board with me, Mr. Lazo was with me. There wasn't a day that a fight didn't go on at that middle school. We had ambulances, we had chaos in the middle school. Our elementary schools were always held up as the flagship of our community. We had a superintendent that I look back, Joanne Austin, that I look back, that had brought plans to the school committee for curriculum development, curriculum staffing. And I sit back 12 years later, and I look back at the plans that three other superintendents have come forward and go, "You know what? She was right. She had the right plan." But we, as school committee members, I don't think gave enough support to her, and unfortunately, she left. But that's in the past. So then we moved on, we got a new superintendent. We worked very hard with Dale Hanley to develop a plan of how to improve our school system, how to improve our community. Now I sit back here again, 10 years later. When I became chairman of the school committee, we had such a divide between the town and the school side. They didn't talk to us, we didn't talk to them. School committee sued the town. I look now, and we bridged that gap. Chairman Cherninsky, colleagues on the school committee, we sat down at the table, what's best for this town? We said, "We need a technology in the school." We came up with a detailed plan, five-year plan, how are we going to replace computers in the school system? Curriculum development, what was our plan? Five-year plan. Sat down, planned, details, together, town and school side. That was unprecedented for us to walk into the town council and get a million five for computers. In the town of Southbridge at that time was unheard of, but we did it, because we worked together, and we planned. They told us we couldn't build a new middle school, high school. They told us that. There's no way that this town's going to vote for that. But what did we do? We put our nose to the grindstone, we sat down and worked together. We had Joe Marino on that town school building committee. And he might tell you now that he voted no, but it's documented, he voted yes for the new middle school, high school. All right? Because we knew what was... what we thought was best for that town. But it took study and development. We didn't just sit there and say, "Let's just build this." And then people told us no, but we did our homework. The state told us, "You know what? You're only going to get that school for..." Well, first off, we walked in, and Kathy Nicola was me, Scott Lazo was with me, walked into Boston, the school building assistance committee, said, "You know what? We're only going to give you a high school, and this is all we're going to give you. We're going to give you $75 per..." whatever it was, per student, this is how many square feet, that's all you're getting." And the town and the school committed together, sat there and said, "No, we don't accept that. This is what this community needs." Boston come out to Southbridge, we're going to show you what we need. We worked together, and we built that middle school, high school. Then they told us, "We're only going to give it for 900 students." And we said, "No, that's not enough." We got them to up that number, again, working together. Now we sit three years later, and there's a divide. And I don't know Ms. Stanton, she could be a very good superintendent. I don't know. But then I look at the whole community as a whole. We have an acting town manager, we have an acting superintendent of schools, we have an acting DPW director, we are now going to have an acting police chief. We have acting everybody. Okay? And my point to that is, if anybody wants to come to Southbridge, where's the stability? Nobody knows what the stability is. My daughter, who was in the high school when we built that new school, that I was proud of to be able to be the chairman of the school committee and be on that school building committee, to open that new building, she entered a building in chaos. I had a principal who was a very fine lady. I knew her as a curriculum person. But I also had that superintendent told me that she wasn't qualified to be a principal at an elementary school, but we gave her the keys to a brand-new building with 1,000 students. For what reason? Because Eric Ely, the educational expert, told us that's what we should do, but no plan in. He never came to us as a school committee and said, "Hey, one principal, that's all we need." Never came to the school committee. I was there every day, every meeting. Never came to us. Then I had that same principal tell me, the new principal say, "Well, you know what? We never operated as a true middle school," I think she called it. And I said, "Why?" She said, "Well, we don't have enough staff." Really? I was on the school committee, I was at budget meetings, I never saw anybody from the school administration come and tell me that we didn't have enough staff. They told me we had enough staff. And I've had this conversation with other people, because of the lack of a permanent superintendent, I think it becomes a trickle-down effect. Because as a teacher or a principal, are they going to buy in to this plan? We all know we have to raise rigor. We all know that every kid is important. But is that teacher or that principal that you have going to buy into the superintendent? Because they don't know if tomorrow they're going to be here, or they're going to have a job. And that's where it starts. It starts at the top, so that everybody can buy in. This is the direction we're going to go on. And I said, when they hired Ms. Gardner, and I didn't know her either, "Either give her a three-year contract, or say you're going to do a search." Because nobody bought into it. And the same thing, Ms. Stanton, you're set up to fail, because nobody's going to have buy-in. Okay? I was disappointed. I like Bill Latoy, I think he's a great guy, I'm glad he's back in the district. But the worst mistake I think that happened was making an interim superintendent, because you took a stable principal in a building and put more chaos on buildings. To me, leave that... leave an interim superintendent open, if he's a great candidate, that's great, but you had a stable principal at that building. You now have a stable principal. I don't know Ms. Earls, but from what I hear in the community and what I've seen, she seems to be a positive influence. I'm all for two principals. That's how we built that building. All day long, that's what we said, two principals. It was a shame they did what they did, but they hid it by, "It's a new position." And believe me, I've been down that road. I know how that works. I was a police chief in a small town. They decided to make my position full-time, they said, "Guess what? You're gone now, because, you know what? It's a new position." How is that a new position? A principal of a school is a principal of a school. If you want to have two principals, post it tomorrow for a middle school principal and give her the help that she needs, and you, Ms. Stanton, as the head of the town, sit down with this team and say, "This is where we're going. Folks, this is your marching orders. Ms. Earls, this is what you have to do in the next year. New principal, this is what you need to do." And you know what? If it all works, Ms. Stanton, you'll be the superintendent, because it worked. But if you throw another principal into that building with those kids, you short-change the kids. That's what happens. It's the kids that don't have stability. And you throw newest... What? I saw the plan. New assistant principals, we're going to advertise for new assistant principals. Why? An assistant principal is an assistant principal. How is that a new job? It's not a new job. Okay? And to say that the assistant principal and the athletic director, it's going to be combined, we already did that. Buzz did that. He made Mr. Wallace the athletic director for a year. So what I'm saying is, I agree, if you want to hire a principal, hire the principal for the middle school, sit down as a team and give them their marching orders. Develop a plan, whatever you're going to do with the superintendent, that's fine, but again, it starts from the top. And get your budget in order, because I don't know what the priorities of your budget are. And the reason I say that is, and again, I can only go what I read in the papers, and I don't trust everything that's in the papers, believe me. But I see something where it says that the school committee or the superintendent presented a two-and-a-half budget, and that went to the town, and I know how the town operates. They're going to give you X amount of dollars. Then the next plan you came up with, that you needed, and which this town may need, was ELL and troubled kids, I believe, correct? Half a million here, half a million there. Nowhere in that plan did I see anything about restructuring the middle school, high school. Now, we come back last minute, and we're going to restructure the middle school, high school, add a tune to another $450,000. So what is the priority? Is the priority restructuring the schools? Is it ELL? Is it troubled kids? Because I, quite honestly, I can't follow that logic, because it's last minute. So whatever you do, just remember, the kids got to come first. Bottom line. Increase rigor, that's great, set your marching orders, but at this point, to change principals and assistant principals is the wrong thing for the system. Thank you.
My name is Lynn Simons. I used to be the director of Southbridge Community Connections, but I spend a lot of time in this town advocating for families and their kids. And I guess I was at the wrong meeting. I thought we were just supposed to give our opinion on restructuring here. We've seen a lot of... we've had a lot of people called out, and things were improper, so I apologized to you for that. So, and I'm going to say that in my three minutes. The reason I think that you need a principal in both schools is because I used to teach in middle school. And if you don't have one master for the middle school and one for the high school, kids get lost in the rush, and parents get lost. And if you read all the data analysis for those parents whose kids are doing well, other kids are failing miserably. And it's not because they aren't trying, and it's not because teachers aren't doing, it's because oftentimes, it's a chaotic system. There's four things that we need in life. We need consistency, we need respect, we need honesty, and we need fairness. And I think that if you want to work together, some of the attitudes in this room have to change. Because the people that created that school, which is too far away, 22 buses a day come in the morning, in the afternoon, and we're supposed to improve transportation, you should look at your transportation bill. Those that developed that school picked that administration to open on the first day. And I have kids that since the first day of that school, their life has been chaotic, good, bad, or indifferent, and you can't pick a... you can't get a superintendent in June that hasn't been fired from someplace else. You need time. You need time to do it. I used to work for the Department of that, I used to hire superintendents. So I'm saying, folks, let's get the politics out of this, let's get the rhetoric out of it, let's get... let's forget the past, let's move forward. This school system, if you're going to improve and not be a Level 4 anymore, all of these... read the facts. Kids are failing in your schools, kids can't read. And teachers will tell you in these reports, they don't feel support, they don't feel they get an evaluation, they don't get a return on that, they don't have paper, they don't have books. Kids don't have books. You know kids don't have books? Kids don't get homework. What's that crazy kind of thing? Some teachers teach, and other teachers don't. It's time that we start to look at the hard facts here. Your reality that you're talking about, folks, doesn't exist for all kids. And what's most important, it has to be for all our kids, not just the kids that can play sports and so on and forth. This restructuring has to take place, and you have to start it in the summer, and you have to back it. And if you keep this rhetoric going and criticizing these people and this and that, you made mistakes too, and don't forget that.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Diane Allard, and I live at 41 Warren Street. To you, Madam Chair, I feel compelled to address this evening the restructuring of the middle high school. As both a parent and a retired educator for the last 29 years at Southbridge High School, I can't help but wonder what effects the proposed restructuring will bring to our students. I was the class advisor to the last class to graduate from this... I was the class advisor to the last class to graduate from this very high school, the class of 2012. When they were freshmen, they chose a model, a motto for their class. Out with the old and in with the new. How little did we know that that motto would come back to haunt us. In the fall of 2012, as a faculty member, walking in to a newly-built middle high school, I was both optimistic and happy that our town had forged ahead with a new middle high school. That optimism soon turned to concern as I taught under the direction of five principals and four superintendents. Educational instruction, rules, discipline, and proposed educational strategies changed as each new administrator took over. Morale was down. Faculty members came and they went, and student life was in constant disruption. I did, however, have as my last year at Southbridge High School, two vice principals who were very strong with the ideals that they saw that we could reach. Their professionalism, their dedication to the faculty, the staff, and the students was what we needed. The current administration is strong. We have a principal who believes in her team. A supportive administrative staff who work well and all work toward a common goal. If we want to move our district forward and out of a Level IV status, then we must support the people we currently have in place. Continuously changing the players in a game produces a no-win situation for all. This is not a game. It is the education and the future success of our children. We have now in place a team who know the rules, who are willing to take risks and are willing to continue the challenges that they have set before them. They have our children's best interests at heart. Please allow these devoted and qualified administrators to continue what they have started. Sometimes, we just need to trust our initial instincts. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Is there anybody else who'd like to address the school committee? Anybody who hasn't had a chance to speak?
Hi.
Good evening.
My name's Teri Colicneisi. I live at 122 Denison Hill Road in Southbridge. I also will say thank you to all of you who serve on the school committee. I know I don't have the skin thick enough to do this job. But I feel that I just need to share my opinion. I was born here, grew up in Southbridge. My kids went through the system. They've done very well. They all graduated from this facility. It was a little while ago. But I'm going to talk from my heart. And what I want to talk about is the town of Southbridge. Town of Southbridge has great bones. It really does. The community, as it's gotten more diverse, I think it's more like the real world. I had one kid who went to college and said, "My school's too white. I don't like it." Kids learn a lot by who they play with, who they're in classes with. We, you know, we unfortunately lost American Optical way back when. I was one of those that worked there at the very beginning. But we have other businesses that have come in. We have people who locate here because it's a great location between Hartford, Providence, and Boston. So we do have professionals moving in. They tend to be professionals without kids. And that's a problem. We need to grow that population. Originally, when all of this started, I sent you all an email, and I asked you to give the system the gift of time. My approach is that all good things take time to happen. The old saying is Rome wasn't built in a day. You can't always be changing teams and processes. I mean, I read through the report, and I was talking to some teachers when I came in. I cannot believe what they have to do now that they didn't have to do when my kids were in school. Between ELL and the teams and the plans that they log in online and teach point and push in and pull out, and it's like, how do you have time to teach? And they said, "Sometimes it's hard." So all the things that education, the state or whatever is mandating that they believe is best for kids to learn is actually taking time away from the kids. That being said, things take time to happen. You can't have a team that starts in place one year after following years of a team for three months, a team for four months, a team for five months. There needs to be stability. I've worked in a number of industries over the years. If we had this kind of turnover in our industries, we'd be out of business. You can't do it. That being said, I think a principal at the middle school's a great idea. It's the way it should have been rolled out. We all know that, and I think the bulk of the people here will agree with that. So you can hire a principal, you know? But everything else, let's just let things settle. Let the kids have that stability. Let the staff have that stability so that they, when they go in, they know who's the principal, they know who's the assistant principal, they know who the guidance counselors are going to be, the ISS, whoever. Just let's give our system that gift of time to settle and then evaluate. In the meantime, I thought it was really kind of interesting that we have a whole timeline in the proposal for principal search, yet you, as a committee, couldn't do this for superintendent. You know? It's, it's not that hard. I mean, there's a couple of fellow town manager search members here. I mean, we did it once. We didn't like the results, and we did it again. And you may have to do that. I don't know. But the reality is, there are groups out there, the school committee group, we talked to another group that might be interested in helping do a search. It's got to start. And that's one thing that will show to the town that you guys mean business. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. (applause)
Hi.
Good evening.
Um, I wasn't planning on speaking. I'm Deborah Mercur, 15 Lebanon Hill Road. A parent of two kids in the high school. I'm also an educational assistant in the special education department. So I kind of come at this from both ends, which is a very tough position to be in, let me tell you. I love my job, and I love my kids that I work with. They're incredible. Smart and troubled. I'd not have any objection to restructuring the school system. I don't. I think it's actually probably a really good idea to have somebody at the head of the middle school. Might relieve some of the pressure off of Ms. Earls. What I don't like is the idea that they have to reapply for their jobs. I don't get it. I really don't. Because it's really not changing anything. You're just adding a position. I liked when you said how it looked from the road. It doesn't look good from the road, making them reapply. Yeah, you know, there was some commentary, "Well, if they're good at their jobs, then they're going to get the job anyway." Personally, as a staff member, I really don't want to wait for that. I kind of like the job that I have and my administration. So that scares me as an employee of this district. That when I walk in the door, provided I have a job in the fall, because I never know, that I'm going to see the administration that I work with in the high school, that I've worked with all year successfully. So that's my concern. And I, I understand that the budgetary problems, I haven't really read all of the budgetary issues regarding the restructuring. I would prefer to see any more money go into an alternative school. Because, and not one that we're going to send the kids to permanently or anything like that, but a place where they can go to learn manners and respect, and that it's a privilege to be in that gorgeous building up on Tory Road. Because until they feel like they've earned it, they feel like they're entitled to it. And unfortunately, that's the impression that we have given the youth of today. That they don't have to work for anything. And that with, you know, one comment, they can get rid of an administrator, which we've heard in the last few days. So they now have the power. These kids of 11, 12, 13 through 18 years old think that they can run the building. And that's what we have to deal with every day. And that's what my children have to deal with every day as students in the building. Classes being disrupted because a kid just thinks they don't have to obey the rules. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) The time is 8:23. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the school committee this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Jasmine Reavis. I live at 45 Rogers Street. I was, really was not going to say anything, but I don't know, just who I am compels me to say something in all of this mess, so. I really think that, that politics shouldn't play a role in any of this, and it saddens me because when people talk about one side or the other, it is we. We all live here. Our kids, all of our kids are affected. You know, a lot of those kids are related to me. My son graduated from Southbridge High. I graduated from this building. I'm not going to tell you what year, but, and I work with a lot of the teachers, and I have to say that this administration has, has made progress. There has been, whether it's been baby steps or whatever, through a lot of the chaos. And we've had a lot of chaos for a long time. And we own that, all of us. Every adult in this room, whether you work in the system, whether you don't work in the system, this is our community, and we own all of those mistakes. All of those kids, every single one of them, and all of those parents, I work with those kids every single day. I talk to parents. And I disagree that parents don't care. A lot of parents do care. They don't always know how to do it. They don't always have all the answers. None of us have all the answers. I'm a parent and made a lot of mistakes, trust me. But I learn, and I learn from the kids in our community, and they are amazing kids. They want to do the right thing. Every kid that you ask, "What is your goal?" "I want to go to college, Ms. I want to do this. I want to play ball. I want to..." They all have goals. They're, but they're, they're still kids. So they need guidance. We all need to, you know, band together and help each other. There are a lot of good points from both sides. I do think that the restructuring is a good idea. But I see that this administration is working hard, and they are doing a really good job trying to, trying to get, make some headway in all of the chaos that has already been there. And the students have suffered. And when you look at the stage at graduation, you will see that suffering because those numbers keep diminishing. It's frightening to me. And it should be frightening to every single person in this room. And we need to work together. And all of this, that doesn't help any of us, but especially our kids, so. You know, I think that you all need to kind of take, take some suggestions. There are a lot of really good suggestions from both ends of the spectrum. I think the timeline is really aggressive for the superintendent's search. I think that it needs to be a little bit more thoughtful. But, you know, even though the restructuring is a good idea, I do think that we need to keep the people that are in there in place because they are making progress. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. (applause)
David Williams.
Good evening.
Teacher, parent, former president of the union in town. I wasn't planning on speaking, but after hearing, hearing people, I realized some, some things are kind of missed. You know, some people hit upon it, but I think some of the points are missed. I absolutely believe that we need two principals, we need somebody in charge of the middle school side. But I think what's missed is that we don't need to restructure the whole school to that. We can hire, we can hire a principal. And any comments that say, "Oh, it's illegal. Oh, you can't do it," it's as silly as saying, "Oh, it's illegal to hire an interim superintendent." Districts do it all the time. DESI is not going to storm through Southbridge, you know, and haul people off to some educational prison because this district wants to hire a principal and do what's best for this town and keep our existing principal in place, hire somebody for the middle school side, however you call that, whether a master principal, a vice principal, or who knows what. But we need somebody in that side. We don't need to fire everybody because this clearly is, looks, smells, and looks like a veiled attempt to do something that you keep saying you're not trying to do. Okay? If, if there is a problem with the administration, then superintendent should do their job and properly evaluate the principals and, you know, do what they, they need to do and write them up, not to try to restructure to get rid of somebody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause) We allotted an hour and a half to this, but if there's anybody else who would like to speak, speak now, please.
Good evening. Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place, also a Southbridge town counselor for the past six years. Been sitting in the audience, listening to all the comments like everyone else, reading your manual, almost cover to cover. It's a lot to take in. It's unfortunate. I was hoping this evening to come here to get more, I, I think, I guess I was a little misunderstood in the focus of this meeting, and I wanted to hear more about the structure. I thought perhaps there'd be a little bit of an overview before we went into the hearing. So reading through, some of the things that I'm concerned about. So, reading through, some of the things that I'm concerned about. I, like many, feel there should be a superintendent search. May the best man/woman come forward and serve this district. I really feel strongly about that, and while I also feel that we should have two principals for our middle high school. Without a doubt, there are many different issues, as many people have pointed out and others who are not here this evening have spoken on, on their behalf in terms of that. Certainly, two principals to address the needs of two very dynamic groups of students. What bothers me, I think, the most too, is when I look back at this and I, in your booklet, and I'm reading some of the information about the previous superintendent, we had Buzz, and then moving forward, one of the things that really excited me a few years back was when there was going to be more accountability and that suddenly we're making all these changes, we were firing a lot of people, unfortunately, people who supposedly weren't doing their jobs, people who were not meeting our criteria, what we wanted to do for our students. So there was a lot of structuring and changing and job additions that went on back then. I had great hope with the plan that was laid out by Buzz, but now we're, we're back at it again. And what really concerns me is if we have not been able to manage the people, if we still are, we were told, give more money, we need more money, so that we can have a better pay scale, so that when we hire teachers, we can get better qualified teachers because they'll come, because we give them more money. Apparently, that's not happening because what I'm hearing and what I'm reading is that still we have teachers who are not implementing what needs to be done. Perhaps they don't know, or perhaps they don't care. I know there are a lot of teachers that do implement. We have very good students. I've, many of people in this community, I know the students, they work really hard, they try. But if, as the reports say, there are things being, not being done by our teaching staff, how is changing things completely going to change the, the real problem that's going on? I believe if you're going to be the management, you need to manage the people. Maybe you don't have to micromanage, but you certainly need to manage and make everybody accountable. So if that starts at the head, if the superintendent is overseeing the staff, who's overseeing, the administration is overseeing the teachers, then we need to really address the problem here because I can't see how changing over staff, changing all the restructuring, which I think is somewhat neat, absolutely. I can see some of the good positions that you are trying to fill and, and, and take care of the, take care of the problem. However, you still need to manage because changing it at this level, a clean slate, and is not going to fix the, the ultimate problem that's going on, the lack of accountability and oversight that's, that's apparently not happening. I would like to see, as I said, a superintendent search, bring in all the qualified candidates, Mrs. Stanton included, and see what comes, see what the tree shakes out at the bottom, you know? Hopefully, we get that nice juicy apple to, to help our students in our community here. I would like to see the second principal added. If you need to restructure some other jobs, do it, but I don't see how changing the whole system at this moment will, will do any more if we don't manage what we've already got. We tried it. We've changed things up. We still haven't managed it properly. I think we need to slow that process down and right now, work on the superintendent side of things and move forward with that. Because from what I'm reading in here, there's a lot more going on than, than what it is you're proposing to do in such a quick manner. So I think, I think you need to, the management needs to, to manage, and that's not being done, and changing up all the employees is not going to, or a great number of employees is not going to change that. We need a strong leader who can manage those people. So I hope you get on with a superintendent search because that's what we desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be last call. It's 8:34. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the school committee this evening? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight and let you know that your input is appreciated. You've given us a lot to consider. The information collected at this hearing is not going to be the sole determinant of what the school committee decides to do. The school committee will consider tonight's input as well as the superintendent's proposal, district data, relevant reports, and will likely seek answers to some of the questions that you've had tonight to help us figure out what to do in the best interest of the students in the school district. I'm sorry. Oh, good. So, that being said, again, thank you all very much for your input this evening. We, we really appreciate it, and you've given us a lot to consider. Thank you.